Call to the House, please stand for the House of Representatives.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silent reflection. Thank you, please have a seat. If you have a cellphone, please make sure the volume is shut off. Ro call.
Karlovic.
Here.
Kramer. Rechner.
Here.
Reese.
Here.
Ister.
Here. There was an executive session held on September 30th of 2019 to discuss personnel matters. Is there any audience comment on agenda items only at this time? I make a motion to approve the minutes of September 9th and 23rd of 2019 in the reports of the Fire Department, Police Department, Treasurer, Engineer, Code Office, and the Planning Commission. Do I have a second?
Second.
Rechner.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Ister. Karlovic.
Yes. And now, if the Executive Director. Al.
Dr. Allen.
Dr. Allen. If you can.
Thank you, thank you Council for letting us have this opportunity to present to you and to be on the agenda this evening. This has been a long-going project. I believe it was about 11 years ago. It was our very first presentation to Sunbury City Council. At that time, John Shipman was on that council. I'm sorry if I'm going to be blocking part of this, I don't want to. A community college is a very unique institution. It is a public institution. And what it does is it ultimately improves business and economics and community development. Maybe you've seen this tea. We are living in the tea. It is the community college desert in Pennsylvania. Around us, in Philadelphia, Pittsburgh, in Harrisburg, and in Luzerne County, there are 14 independent community colleges. Others, other locations have sites or centers. What we are seeking is another independent, full-service, and comprehensive, dedicated community college for our region. So what is a community college center or site such as we have in our area, one in Shevokan and now one in Watson Town? Or in this area, also a satellite center right here in Sunbury on 4th Street. Centers and site locations are great because they're right in your locale. But there are commuter costs. Those costs come in when a student wants to complete a program and must transfer, actually commute to the location where that corporate college is located. That in our area, because we are distant from the existing community colleges, that is a long commute. It is at least an hour and a half to Luzerne County Community College by the time you're parked and in your class. Such is the same with Lackawanna College because you must go up to Scranton in order to complete the degree program. Not to mention the cost of fuel and vehicle maintenance, insurance on the vehicle, et cetera. All of that, we did calculations on that. It comes out to be about $1,500 to $2,000 a year. That's just, that's just dollar cost. The time cost is even greater, especially for those with families or who are working in this area. So we also face a human resource loss. So a student will transfer into a community college like up in the Northeast. And because they're a good student, there are packages and benefits that are offered to them upon completion. And they're retained as a human resource in an area very separate and different in its goals and objectives than ours. We have a revenue stream loss. So where do the tuition dollars go? They go to the main campus, the corporate location. For all of the tuition dollars, every student also has state appropriation. That amount goes up to the corporate location, and it doesn't remain here. We have, we also lose revenue stream from federal grants and from additional Department of Community and Economic Development, Department of Labor. Those dollars will go to a community college that is working at fulfilling the needs of employers and the demand in their, that is within their workforce development area. So we lose our tax base ultimately as we have an outmigration of youth and talent. And those with the skills are being shifted to the locations where they complete their degree programs. And they're recruited out of those areas, and they don't return here. So we lose a tax base. And then there's that opportunity lost for businesses in the area that want to grow, want to fulfill strategic plans, but cannot find that skilled workforce or skilled employee to be able to do that and thereby fulfill those, those goals. So what is a community college? And how does it pay? How does it pay to have one? There are expected and certain returns that community colleges have. And we see that because there are 14 of them, and they are all doing well. The revenue streams, one, they will remain here. And for every dollar that's invested, an immediate, immediate return is $4. That, that comes through just the tuition and the state appropriation. Then there's additional at startup, about $13 to $1, $13 to $1 in immediate economic development. And using the example of Pennsylvania Highlands Community College in Cambria County, which is the most recent community college established in 1993, they have an annually economic impact of $50 million. And that's one of the least amounts of the community colleges in Pennsylvania. The skilled workers remain here. That means the tax base grows. The community development expands because there's collaboration among the entities within the service area. And that's one of the things that community and economic development is looking for. How strong are your collaborations? And then the economic impact expands, just as I gave in that example of Pennsylvania Highlands Community College. To give you an idea, back in 2010, their economic impact was over $1 billion. And that was one of the larger Goliaths of community colleges in the nation. One of the, in Pennsylvania, also a very, the largest community college in Pennsylvania is Community College Allegheny County in Pittsburgh. Their enrollment is about 40,000. The overall annual economic impact by all of the community colleges in the U.S. is about $1 trillion. So what is the local workforce? And why is the community college so important to that? I know you can't really see this very well. See if I can expand it. So what you're seeing here are all of the workforce development offices across Pennsylvania. Ours is the huge one in the middle, the gray one, the central workforce development. Right there, that's our area. If you look, most of these areas have their own community college. Luzerne, Lehigh, Berks, that's Redding, Bucks County, Montgomery County, Philadelphia, Delaware County, Chester. And then in the south-central is Harrisburg. The southern Alleghenies, you have Penn Highlands. West Moreland has its own community college. The city of Pittsburgh, like I said, Community College of Allegheny County is the largest one in Pennsylvania. Up, up here, you have Butler County Community College and Beaver County Community College. So those areas have that constant continual workforce generator mechanism always going. And we have this huge hole in the middle that doesn't have that. So what is workforce preparation? Just, just to give an idea, on the workforce projections for central Pennsylvania development area. The workforce projections for our central Pennsylvania area from 2016 until 2026 are about 32,000 open jobs in our, in that central area. 32,000 open jobs. Our high priority out of those 32,000 open jobs right now, our high priority that are unfilled are over 7,000 jobs in that central PA area. 7,000 jobs that are open. And, and we're not filling them. What's going to happen to businesses that really want to, to be robust? They want vitality, but they can't get a workforce. Where will they go? Where will they turn? They will go to a place where they know it's guaranteed they are going to get that workforce and those people who are skilled and trained and ready to work. And I think we saw this in an example when Amazon was looking for another place, a site location. They specifically targeted areas that had community colleges. Because that is where they know they will be able to get a skilled, qualified, and trained workforce. So how does a community college, how do these community colleges do this? They actually hold roundtable discussions without talking. They listen to all of the employers tell about what they are missing in their workplace. What do they need from their employees? What, what will make them be able to grow their business with those employees? And the community colleges really focus in on how can we meet that employer's need? How do we, what curriculum do we need to develop? How fast do we need to get this done and get it deployed and deliver the instruction? Where will we recruit these students from? So that's the work that the community college does. And then it, it channels those students into those employers that have, have shown the need for them. So what are the major milestones for us to be able to establish our own regional community college? We need a university partner. That partner will provide the umbrella accreditation that we need in order to offer the programs that are needed in this area. And while we pursue our own independent accreditation. And that is through a special organization called the Middle States Commission for Higher Education. We also need a multi-county sponsorship. The legislation in Pennsylvania is such that we must have sponsors. In the, the 14 community colleges, 13 of them are county-sponsored. Counties are very stable sponsors. They hold very long terms of agreement for their sponsorships. The, another model is the high schools or the school districts being sponsors. And the problem that the community colleges have run into is that those are a little more tenuous because every time there's a board turnover, there is the concern about whether or not there's going to be sponsorship. And now we have all these students enrolled. What will we do if our sponsors pull out? So that's why counties are very stable. Then we would submit a state application to the Pennsylvania Department of Education and the State Board of Education. And upon approval, we would begin by hiring a founding president, the administration, the faculty, the staff, and begin our programming and structure. Within two to three years, the new community college would have a candidacy for its own accreditation. And then within two to three years from that time, ending in about 2025 to 2027, there would be accreditation of a new community college in the central Susquehanna Valley. Before we get to questions, right now, we are running a petition for our county commissioners to hear from us. We have it on newcommunitycollege.org website where you can go and sign that petition and send it in to the county commissioners in the county in which you reside. We also have postcard petitions. I have some with me if you are interested to sign one tonight. So far, we've collected, just in the last few months, about 1,300 from four counties. Montor, Northumberland, Snyder, and Union. And prior to that, in 2010, 2011, we collected 2,000 petitions. So combined, we have about 3,300, 3,400 petitions. And that, that's growing. And we need everybody to, who wants this, to really make it known to your county commissioners that this is important to us, to our, our children, to our grandchildren. And I just would then, I'll just give my personal story on why I have a passion for this. I grew up in a single-parent home in, in Philadelphia. My dad died at a young age, and I did not have any opportunity. There would not be, there was not a dime to go to college. But fortunately, there was a community college, and I was able to go there and take a couple of classes and learn what a syllabus is, understand how a semester is run. And through that, really enjoyed it, liked the learning process. And furthermore, I was 18, 19 years old, but in a classroom that included 40-year-olds. And so it was a much different understanding now about how the world works. And you've got to work with these, with people who, who are different and, and have a much wider and broader experience of working life. And then one more reason why this is important to me. I, I tell this tale of three daughters. I have three daughters. One daughter went to Danville High School, zoomed right through Danville High School, right through Penn State College of Everly Science, went to medical school, went to residency, and is now just months away from finishing becoming a neurologist. Second daughter, not so easy, much more difficult. Difficult to focus, difficult to comprehend. Worked hard at it and did her very best of her. And I always said, if you have a cup full or a bucket full of capacity, fill it to the top. If you have a thimble full, just fill it to the top. That's what matters. So she did her best, but she is the candidate that I say is perfect for the community college. Because at 30 years old, she now has a son. And she needs the community college to move ahead and be able to become self-supporting. And absolutely, I know her son is going to need it as well. And then I had a third daughter who's already passed away at age 20. We are all, I think every family or neighborhood has not been untouched by addiction and the scourge of addiction. And so I've, I've been through that. I know the pain of it. My daughter left us a granddaughter who is our darling. And she's now six, going on seven, and she will need this community college. And I'm always speaking as one person, but I know this story is multiplied many times in our valley. So I ask you, really consider how this community college will benefit you, benefit your business, benefit your family and your neighborhood. I'd like to just mention that I have some board members here, including my board president, which is Megan Beck. John Shipman, who I mentioned, was at that first Sunbury City Council meeting that I went to. He's here. He serves as vice president of our board. And Roger Baven, who chairs our nominating committee. And Bob Zimmerman, who is a member-at-large and has his own story to tell. Thank you. Any questions? Counsel.
Thank you for coming, please have a good day everyone.
Officer Ketchum? Can you raise your, your right hand and repeat after me please?
I Terry Ketchum, do solemnly swear.
I Terry Ketchum, do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge.
I will discharge.
The duties of my office with fidelity.
The duties of my office with fidelity.
Thank you.
He's just going to briefly discuss where he came from.
Okay, well, first, I thank the mayor and the council for giving me the opportunity to work for the city of Sunbury Police Department. I've been a police officer for approximately 13 years, full-time in Cold Township. The opportunity came about not too long ago through talking with Corporal Hare and Corporal Bremagen to come work for the city of Sunbury. If you would have asked me a few years ago to come to work for the city of Sunbury, I would, I would have said no. But after talking to Corporal Hare and Corporal Bremagen, their procedures, their policies, and the way the police department is run today, I had to jump on the opportunity. I've been here for a week now and observed what they do. And bar none, the Sunbury Police Department is the leader of law enforcement in this county. And I am proud to be a member of the team.
Well, thank you so much again. All right, Jody.
Yes.
The clerk.
Okay. So I know you might remember from a few months ago when we talked about job descriptions for the administrative assistant and I, and how there was a big gap. There were a lot of the responsibilities that the city clerk was responsible to that wasn't covered in either one of our job descriptions. So we adjusted for that and updated a job description for Jolynn. Now, during this time where I'm going through all of the ordinances, the whole city code, during the codification review process, when I spoke to the contractor, the editor, I said, oh, we've, we've switched, and now we have a city administrator and an executive assistant, administrative assistant will have to change that language throughout the ordinances. And so when they provided their legal and editorial review and analysis, there were 35 references throughout all the ordinances that had some responsibility reference to the city clerk. In addition to that, I've been to some of the training in my, this first year of being the city administrator. And it was pointed out that a third-class city should have a city clerk. So I did research and looked up the third-class city code. And there is the section, "Remains," that says that the council shall appoint a city clerk. I spoke with our solicitor about it, and, and he agreed that that was some kind of, there may have been some sort of oversight when transitioning to the city administrator. But to him, it does seem clear that the, the council is required and shall appoint a city clerk. So the, so now the question before the council is, what would you prefer to do about that? Jolynn has been doing most of the responsibilities. It might be logical to appoint her as a city clerk. And she would have to have a little bit of additional training, be, she is required to be a notary public. But other than that, there would be no additional compensation at this time. But it's for your discussion and decision.
Basically just changing what she's already doing, changing the title.
Yeah, and according to Joel, they took it out, the third-class city code, and put it back in.
Yes.
That it was mandated to have a city clerk.
Yeah.
We were told in the beginning that once our previous city clerk retired, there was no more city clerks that had to be a city administrator. And then they changed it back.
Well, then I would make the motion to appoint Jolynn Barner as the Sunbury City Clerk moving forward.
Rechner.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Karlovic.
Yes.
Kramer.
On the resolution.
Okay, so this is just following through on the process that we've been going through to apply for the, the grant through the Department of Community Economic Development and the Home Program. It's a $500,000 affordable housing activities. And so the resolution now is before to, whereas the need for services is further demonstrated by a waitlist that already has 15 applicants requesting assistance, that a housing need exists and has been identified in the local and state consolidated plan, and opposed housing activity addresses this need. Be it further resolved that the city of Sunbury has conducted the required citizen participation process. We've had those public meetings. Be it further resolved that the city of Sunbury Council will assure the provision of the other necessary funds to make the activity feasible. Be it further resolved that the city of Sunbury Council will reimburse the Commonwealth for any expenditures found by DCED to be ineligible. Be it further resolved that the appropriate officer of the city of Sunbury Council is directed to execute a certificate attesting to the adoption of this resolution and to furnish a copy of this resolution to the city.
How many say the motion?
Second.
Reese.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes.
Karlovic.
Yes.
Rechner.
Yes.
Okay, so this is a review of the municipal liability insurance. Okay, so this is a review of the municipal liability insurance. I think that from time to time over years have passed, it's, you know, it becomes time to just kind of review what we're doing as far as any kind of contract or services that we are purchasing. And in this case, we wanted to take a look at our municipal insurance portfolio. We have no dissatisfaction with our current insurance agent or the carriers. I want to make that clear, but it was just time to see how does it compare with others. So we did reach out to a company called E H D, and I want to say that there were many hours of work, mainly on behalf of Jolynn, that, to provide the necessary documentation and information in order for this company to come up with a program that they could present a proposal to us. And understand that it is a very important decision, of course, for the council, and we wanted to make sure that the council had sufficient information to compare policies, compare coverages, compare service, so that you could make a decision, and no decision, I want to make clear, is required this evening. I think it's a lot of material to get through. So I just wanted to tell you what is in your packet. There is a two-page document that is the schedule of insurance that we currently have and when it's due to be renewed. There is a proposal from the company called E H D, and you'll see all of the different coverages outlined there and their premiums that they are offering. And then they've also provided a folder that has more history on their company. There's a document that they provided just earlier today that has to do with extending law enforcement and public officials' liability to bring it to the coverage that we currently enjoy. And so that's in addition to their previous proposal. Also in the folder is a list of their clients, and you'll see that they have, this is a trust, so depending upon the performance of the entire, of all the participants in the trust, there's a potential for a dividend, which then, in this document where they list all of their clients, they can show what their premium was before the dividend and then their net dividend after they received that. The dividend comes a year later than the year you pay the premium. So the municipality would not be eligible for a dividend in the first year, it wouldn't come until after two years of participation. So that's something also to consider. So there's that data in the folder. Then in addition to that, from Purdy Insurance is, we did give them, Adam Purdy, the opportunity to look at this proposal from E H D and then see what they could do through the carriers that they work with. So you'll have, there's actually two copies of this in your packet. And the reason is, I got an updated copy later. The one with the green tab on it is the one that's the most current, that has the most current numbers. The original packet had a little bit more information about the, either the carriers or coverages that wasn't included in the second packet. I wanted you to have it all, but the green tab is the one that has the most current numbers related to premiums and coverages. I think that's all I have. I just wanted to make sure you knew what you had in your packets. Chris, did you want to have any other comments?
Yeah, just a couple things. So just so everyone knows, the goal was to look at all insurances, not just this one, but Benetton, we did not know in their small print that there's a six-month, you have to give them six months' advance notice if you're going to shop at all. We weren't, we were within that already, so it was too late for this year, so next year. Also, on the workers' comp program, we did have them look at that. They have, you can see on the one program page from E H D of the same company, but they do an M R M. That's their workers' comp. They wanted to look at that, but we were ineligible for that based off of our claim rating over the last couple of years with injuries. Their, what they're proposing is that all business would move to them, and then we could, within a year, their hope would be to move into their M R M program, which is also a dividend workers' comp program that they estimate even larger savings over time based off the dividend. I will say the coverages amongst both of these policies from E H D and from Purdy are very similar. By doing this review, if nothing else, the nice thing that we see that Adam was able to change for us was on the, all of our buildings. We went from an actual cash value coverage, which means whatever the value of the building was when it was destroyed is what we would get for it, to a replacement cost coverage just by doing the review, which is huge, because now if anything was to happen in our buildings, we didn't pay to get replaced. The major difference, so just so you see that separate letter that was put in today, so under the Purdy policy, they have a commercial umbrella liability policy that extends over all of our coverages, including our law enforcement liability and our public officials' liability coverage. With the E H D policy, they don't allow that. They don't have those two things in there. Instead, what they do is they increase the coverage of those policies up to 5 million to basically match what our umbrella policy would cover at that point then. And that's the premium difference that you see under there. So I would encourage you just to look at everything. At this point, I'm going to dive into a little bit more too. There's pros and cons to both policies. Premiums, year one, are very similar. There's about a $6,000 difference between them, but after two years is when the serious changes would come in based off the dividend, which they estimate to be around 20% of the premium. That's where you'll see, and they did include, did you go over that? They included the dividends?
Yeah.
So if you have questions on the coverages, I'll answer those, or you can, I think you can even call Adam or Mike from, both their information's are on there, and the next meeting will come back.
I just want to add back to Purdy's, every year, Purdy's always sit down with us and over every line item, and always, you know, save what we can save, number one. Also, back to their dividends, we'd be eligible after two fiscal years?
Yes.
And you'd be using the second year as the marker?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
But there's no guarantee. You said 20%?
Yeah, 20% is what their estimated, dividend estimate is. Again, yeah, there's no guarantee on that. So at worst, you pay your premium. That's your worst that you pay, you don't get anything back. With Purdy's, we do get a small dividend as well. It's not quite 20%, but there's a dividend in there. So it just would come down to how the rest of the pool does. It kind of works like Benetton where it depends on how everyone does, and then you get a piece of that. But they have said that since they've been doing this, they have not paid a dividend. They've always paid a dividend.
Did you?
Hold on. No, as I say, they add 100% retention. So out of the 250, 270 mistiles are in this, no one's ever left. So that's, I don't know how that speaks for you, but it's pretty good.
You said there was like $6,000 difference?
Yes.
Okay, now I must be missing something here, because they look pretty much the same.
So that's where, that's where it gets confusing. So Purdy, their policy would be the base policy plus the umbrella cost plus the law enforcement liability and the public officials. Those are the ones that we're comparing right now. So you have to add all of those things up together. On the E H D side, it's the policy plus the law enforcement plus the public officials, but with the increased coverages, which is what on those two pages there. So the total cost for all of them, if you haven't written down, you can look somewhere. I think it's like 112,000 on the Purdy side and 106 on the E H D. So again, really close. About $6,000 difference between the two. And I can gladly go over how that breaks down anytime.
Yeah, because I was looking there at some premiums of just to basic premium summary premium.
Yep, so there's sort of 68,000.
68, yeah, a month 68.5, and there was 68.
So that number is just for the general liability policy?
Okay.
And then you'll see on the Purdy one, it has the general liability policy, and then that number on the right is what our policy is this year with the umbrella. So they took out the umbrella because basically H D is supporting us with the umbrella as well. So they tried to make it fair. So essentially, they are the same base coverage, but then when you add in the umbrella cost, and then there's other two, and then with E H D, you just increase those coverages, that's where the difference comes in. Yeah. So a lot of numbers are confusion.
Now, I don't know how much time this took, Chris, but.
I do.
Okay. Didn't we go down across and compare coverage, building to building?
Yeah, well, it's the exact same for building. They each can use the exact same coverage building to building that we use. Really, again, the coverage across the board, there's a couple deductibles that are higher on one, a couple deductibles that are higher on the other, I mean, they kind of flip up on that. The coverage is across the board pretty similar. The Purdy policy does have a couple of extensions on the policies that add on a couple things that we haven't been able to confirm whether we have on the H D, but there are two or three things that we have to just get for sure coverage.
The more you, the more you looked into it, then there's more details that we really still have to get some answers to.
Yeah, no, again, they're close.
But I think it's going to take our collectively eyes looking at it to really examine it and then, and then see what you want to do.
Also, each property is separately bound?
So we have, we have a blanket coverage on the, on, for all of them, which is about $17 million, and then they're individually broken out based off of there. But so unless there was a catastrophe that wiped out everything, we have that blankage coverage to fall back on. But there is individually broken down coverage for each one, adds up to the $17 million.
I use it, on Purdy's side, they have replacement cost.
They both now have replacement costs, so they match that. We were on actual, so no matter what, just by doing this review is a good thing because we work from the actual cash value to the replacement cost.
Which is a lot more value to us.
Absolutely, yeah, much more value to us. I guess just make, there are no allegations of the H D whatsoever. So I'm just going to.
You're in the board, right?
Yeah, no, absolutely not to you.
Well, we have a budget meeting coming up. By then, we can review a lot of this.
Yeah, we have to make a decision by November 1st. Both, both are required. We've already sent in some applications already that need to be filled out, and E H D said if we're going to be able to turn this over in time, we have to make a decision by November 1st. So next meeting will come back up for sure.
Thank you, Chris. Everybody did all the hard work on that.
Absolutely.
Cable television.
Okay, the next item is the cable television. So it is our current franchise agreement with Service Electric Cable Vision is coming to a close at the end of this year, and so they did send a draft ordinance, and I believe I received it at the end of September, sent it out to everyone electronically on the 1st of October. And just looking at the two compared side to side, they have updated some of their definitions. It is a non-exclusive agreement, so there can be other companies that provide cable service, but they also have to be under a similar agreement as Service Electric. This franchise term would be for, also for 10 years with an option to renew for an additional five, and that's what we did with the last one. They did change one thing about extending coverage where the number of existing households could be passed per mile. Originally, it was if it was less than 50, now it's if it's less than 25. I don't know if that makes much difference to us in town. They added a section eight, which is service to municipality and schools. So in this agreement, they would provide without charge one standard installation and one outlet of basic cable television service to one administrative building owned and occupied by the municipality and to those K through 12 public school buildings as requested by the school districts. That was not in the previous ordinance. The municipality, the franchise fees and payments, the rate remains at 5% of gross revenue as proposed in their new ordinance that they have drafted. It did add, and I did not see it in the ordinance that was currently in our code book, but a section 15 that has to do with auditing, that the municipality shall have the right to inspect at its sole cost and expense and at reasonable times, within six months after the company's submission of franchise fee payments, the records of the company relating to their gross revenues. I did not, again, that was not in the previous ordinance and it's here, but it's at the cost of the municipality to have the auditing done. And that was it as far as I could change, I can discern between the two, the differences between the two.
Agreement is 10 years?
The agreement is 10 years with an option to renew for an additional five, so would be a total of 15, and that's similar to the previous one.
And it's 5% of the gross revenue, right?
Correct.
So if their revenue goes up, ours goes up.
Correct. Everybody buy cable.
Back on the auditing?
Yes.
Is there anything in there states, once we have it audited at our cost, we find that the numbers are wrong the last year, how far back can we go to try to take and recover our losses in a cheated audit? Those numbers have been coming down for the last couple of years, and that's why we had asked them for an audit and they never responded.
But we have, we have to, we have to pay for the audit.
Pardon, he doesn't say it in how long.
Yeah, we have, we're responsible for the cost of the audit.
So the audit. The audit must be completed with 180 days after it's commenced, it must be certified, it has to have an independent public accountant, written report to the municipality and the company within 30 days after completion of the audit. The company may dispute it within 60 days. It should resolve that again within 30. If it's not resolved, you know, there's all of this. So it doesn't. Doesn't say.
This is a question I have, and I wasn't, the previous one was 10 years also, so we're just coming up to the 10.
15, because it was 10 and then we renew for additional five.
You said the numbers have been going down year over year? I don't know about, I mean, my cable bills have been going up everywhere.
No, I think there's more people going to DISH than cable.
So they're saying that they're.
Their revenues are down, yes.
From us.
Yes.
The users. No, their costs are going up crazy.
And by doing this, so we only have an option of.
I mean, we could go back and propose changes to the ordinance, negotiate changes to the ordinance, but they drafted it, you know, so.
Well, I know they did on their behalf.
Yeah.
They're not going to give us anything.
I'd be interested to see how their municipality sizes, if they ask for higher than 5%.
When we went back and we had this meeting 15 years ago, Sealems Grove was involved, there's some other municipalities, and because Sealems Grove found, I think it was Sealems Grove found you were being cheated also.
I'm just interested, there's other municipalities that are around the same size as us that Service Electric deals with.
All right, so do we want to table this until the next meeting?
When does this have to be signed up? Like the final reading?
So it has to be in effect for the 1st of January. This one, yeah. And so.
Do you have any other questions that you have to?
Chris, if you think about it, we don't stop, what are they going to do? Take everybody's feet away? No.
Not chaos, I imagine, under an agreement.
They've been shortchanging this already.
So does this, is this a first reading and now we're going to?
We don't have to.
Make revision, we don't have to have it, no?
No, we don't have to have a first reading at all.
Okay, this is not a first reading then.
I'll make a motion with table.
I second that.
Thank you.
Okay.
I wonder if it would be worthwhile talking to another Comcast or something? Seeing if what they would, you know.
I don't think they're allowed in.
No, so you just said the other one was not exclusive, it's not.
It is not an exclusive agreement, but any cable television service would have to have a similar agreement, yes.
I think that the 5% is still at state law as the max we can ask. I don't think they're raising it.
All right, tax exoneration?
Oh, yeah. With the vote, yeah, then you set the motion.
Who's second? Reitner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Seister?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, tax exoneration, make a motion to exempt $903.88 worth of taxes.
Reitner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Seister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Make a motion to pay out the general fund $166,934.54.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Reitner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Seister?
Strategic management, what's up, Chris?
So the request for proposals went out on the October 2nd to four different consulting firms, and they are due back on November 4th, so hopefully in November we'll be able to get those. able to get those.
Okay. Um, the full-time hiring, that's on the agenda, that is tabled until after the budget season. The annual fire police Halloween parade is this Thursday, the seventeenth, at seven P M. The city hall is conducting a trick or, a trunk or treat at city hall on Thursday, October thirty-first, from eleven A M. to three P M. The New Year's Eve celebrate, or the New Year's Eve committee meeting is this Wednesday at five thirty P M., not six P M. as indicated. The next heart and heritage committee meeting is October twenty-third at six P M., and the next city council meeting is October twenty-fourth at six fifteen in these council chambers. Is there any audience comment at this time?
Officer Norris, Sunbury, I, uh, see about this, uh, jaywalking, are we going to put any more crosswalks in?
We have, um, been repeating crosswalks throughout the city.
So, to answer your question, I don't know if we can put in additional crosswalks?
Well, there should be one put in from the market over to this side.
From, from Cameron Park, or...
No, up at the farmers, up at the market house.
In the middle of the block?
People use that every week, I'm one of them, and if I, and I jaywalk on it right now, I am not going to walk up and over and down, get all my stuff and go back up, over and back to the car.
All right, so if I, if I could, the article that you read was actually, uh, not all the way correct. We're not hiding behind vehicles, we're not looking for pedestrians jaywalking, we're not sighting them, we're not arresting them, we're not going to handcuff them. All this is, is to be educational, you are allowed to cross that street without the crosswalk, but now you have to stop for the vehicles, we're just trying to make it, um, more noticeable.
They got like on a stop for, we get hit, you're crazy.
I know, but we have to spread the information, especially with the holiday season and the heavier foot traffic coming downtown.
Because I know there's vendors in there, the elderly people cannot carry their stuff, and they carry it across the street.
And they're allowed to continue to do so.
Well, because if they won't be...
No one said they're not allowed to.
I'm just telling you, I'm one, if I can't do it, I will be going to Seale's Grove, to their market, or I'll be going to Lewis Grove, to their market.
That's fine, but you're allowed to.
I know, and that, that takes away from...
Officer Bremjen wanted to make a comment, please?
I, I would actually, I would actually say that, um, the mayor, with the article that did come out, um, a lot of the facts were correct with, with the daily item, but what we're looking for, we're not looking to cite anybody, and what the mayor did on Saturday was very, uh, proactive and actually educating, that's all that the mayor and, uh, Miss Ockery wanted to get out there, was to educate people stepping off the crosswalks, stepping into the streets, uh, stepping, you know, and, and not only that, but the motorists also looking for pedestrians, because it has become an issue, and there has been many people that have been hit on Market Street, um, so what the mayor did, I would, you know, applaud his, his effort and what he did with that, um, and then following it up on Saturday, he also went out and educated people, um, with one of our officers, he actually took Officer Slack, they went together, there were cards that were issued, um, actually...
You have one there?
If I can see it. This is...
Watch you.
Yep.
Yes.
And this is basically what was, what was handed out there, was the yield, with the right-of-way, and then some information on the back, basically just cautioning drivers and things like that, so, what actually took place there was an educational, and what he did, you know, actually is going to save, actually, hopefully saves, even if only saves one person, but it's going to save, it is going to save lives, because we do have people that are struck on Market Street, we do have people not crossing into crosswalks, but it's not for us, the Sunbury Police Department, to come out and arrest you, it's not what we're about, it's not anything to do with that, it's not about us coming out handcuffing you or arresting you, it's just basically a safety educational, and I think that he got his point across, because it did raise a lot of people's concerns, and he brought concern, and he brought basically to the attention of the public, and with people asking if they're going to get arrested, you're not, you're not going to get arrested, but at the same time, we do, you know, we have, we have to use our cautionary, uh, measures to basically get out there and for people to know that you need to cross safely, pedestrians, and not only that, but the drivers need to just pay attention and be aware of, of our people shopping into downtown, because, you know, and all, our, our, our people that are in the downtowns, our businesses, they want to see people, and we want to see them there as well, but we want them to be safe, so, he did a nice job with that, there.
Well, I think, uh, you ought to go into the market house and talk to some of the vendors, because they're upside over.
Nope, uh, also Officer Slack and I, we were in the market house on this Saturday, and we did speak to multiple vendors.
I didn't see you there. Another thing, I want to thank the police station, uh, Bremjen for his work on Saturday up in Twelfth Street.
What's that?
So, I want to thank you for your work up in Twelfth Street on Saturday, what, the Saturday evening?
Yes.
With the little fire.
Yep, yep.
We thank you for that.
Yeah, no problem, and that's, that's basically with the, with the police department and everything else like that, you guys have concerns with that, you know, we're, we're starting to get back up to staff and, you know, we're able to come out and, and, and basically look at the needs and, you know, anytime, anytime you guys need us, we're here.
Okay. I want to thank you, Mary, for getting all these weeds along, all this, all street coming down, looks better.
Thank you.
Any other audience comments tonight?
I'm, um, Sammer Heil, I live over on Chestnut Street, and I was here a few months ago and talked about how Sunbury needed to start picking itself up. Last week, the week before, I don't know when, I noticed on, oh, fourth, fifth, third street, next to the Edison, across from the Edison?
Fourth street.
Fourth street, across from the Edison is a mural going in out there, I think it's wonderful. I think it, it helps lift the town up, it makes us look better, and I hope more people do it, I think it's great.
Thank you. Any other audience comments tonight?
Here, I just want to remind everybody, this Saturday from two to five, at the Audubon Church, uh, pumpkin cake for the kids, uh, organized by Randy Diener, but, uh, it's a whole community event from two to five, so everybody, the police will be there to help pump, uh, paint some pumpkins for the kids, so, encourage everybody to come on Saturday.
Thanks. Any other audience comments? All right, with that, okay.
I've just a, a minor follow-up to the, um, the jaywalking issue, and that is just not exactly jaywalking issue per se, but that, um, our blocks in the downtown are very long, I don't know if there's a possibility of having, um, a mid-block crosswalk on the three hundred or four hundred block, but they're, they are pretty long, um, and I don't know what the PennDOT guidelines on that, if they allow it or not, but...
You can't stay too, please.
We can, we did ask, we did meet with PennDOT, um, just a couple weeks ago, and that was kind of what prompted some of this as well, there are unprotected or un, uncontrolled crosswalks, and that would be another uncontrolled crosswalk where there isn't a stop sign or a traffic sign that makes people stop, um, and so PennDOT is very cautious about those kind of things, but we are working with PennDOT to make those crosswalks that we have to be safer.
They did, yeah, they did make, uh, the three hundred block, I don't know if you see the lines painted on the ground, the dotted lines, like near the railroad track?
Okay.
We were finding that it was unsafe, especially for people to use the handicap spots at the end, to come out and get up to go like to the arc or something in there, um, and, uh, so they helped us on that, you know, they're just trying to make them, as you said, safer to use those, but I get that it's a far walk, but we're working towards at least a little drive.
Yeah, what happens is people, people cross because it is, it's just too, too far, you know, and it, and it would really, it would help us if it was possible, and I know it's a balancing act, because, you know, I see vehicles come through at high rates